Do they know they can't get out that way? Uh, the sheriff, would you please? We don't want jumping over the banners. Amazing thing is, we thought you knew the way. Okay, we're gonna call a work session to order, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Here. Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Ms. Wakus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. All present. Any additions or deletions to the work session agenda? Excuse me?
I think we can delete number two.
Yes. Since we voted on it in the voting sessions, number two would be taken off. Anything else? All favor of the agenda as presented with the deletion of number two indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, unheard? County manager, Mr. Pedri?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll let the report speak for itself, but I do want to talk about one specific case that happened right over Christmas. And this is why we're lucky to have county employees, and we should really be thankful for what they do every single day. There is a family with four children, whose those four children were placed with a foster family on Christmas Eve. Those four children were placed with the foster family, and they were, for reasons that, you know, we don't want to talk about here. But those four children were placed with foster family, and they didn't have any presents come Christmas Day. And they were very upset because they had been extra good that year. When our caseworkers heard this, Seal Bardalai and Georgine Myers from Children and Youth, they took it upon themselves to go through the toys that were donated from Children and Youth, as well as reach into their own pockets and go to the stores and purchase toys for these children to make sure that they had a holiday. And that's not something that, you know, obviously gets a lot of attention or media or anything along those lines, but that's what these people do every single day. And that's what a county employee does every single day. And obviously, there's issues that come up, and we talk about a lot of things in here, but at the end of the day, we're here to help people, we're here to serve people, and I'm extremely proud of those two county employees over what they did and of their efforts to really make a difference there. So I want to make sure council's aware of that story, did it make the report? But if there are any questions on the report or any other matter, I'd be happy to take them now.
Yes, Ms. Haak.
Well, I think that is commendable, and the employees who are involved are certainly angels in disguise, I guess I should say. But my question on Children and Youth is pretty much the same question I've had since September, which is about the missing money, or the missing documentation for the money. Where do we stand with that?
We've assigned the new fiscal three officer, Chris DeLisandro, to review that along with our financial services head over at Human Services, Adam Wernritz. They've made some really good progress. I believe they're gonna be doing an update tomorrow at the audit committee.
Is that on the 2.5 million or on the 5.6?
That's the 2.5 from Children and Youth.
Okay. Where do we stand with the 5.6 million?
The 5.6 million, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you. We're currently working on that with our own internal staff at Children and Youth, my team, and Baker Tilly. I think we did discuss that at one point. We thought it was appropriate because I prepared the audit documents that we had so a third-party look at these documents. So we've had conference calls, we started pulling the documentation. They recommended going back to 2008. We're obviously starting with the most current documentation from 2017. So we're working with both Children and Youth, the county, and a third-party, and we'll have a contract, we'll have dates, and all that assigned in a very short order.
But Baker Tilly is the third-party, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we're working with Baker Tilly, I'm correct.
Okay. And were they involved in any of the audits of Children and Youth?
They were not involved in any of the Children and Youth audits, as you know, they were the county auditor, kind of the period in between auditors, but they were not. But they obviously did get reports from Children and Youth. We've had the due-to forms, we've had the transfers, they've looked at the books. One of the things is they're familiar with New World, obviously, that's helpful and with the timeframe. So both of our teams will be providing documentation and moving forward to get this done sooner rather than later. We know we have the audit committee meeting in this year's audit, so if we can get this done, you know, much sooner than the end of the audit report. So is it gonna be done tomorrow? No. But if we can get this done in February, March, it's much better than May, because as you know, we don't want to have the auditors trying to reissue numbers, changing numbers at the last minute. So that's really what we're working on, to have this done in a short order ourselves, a third-party, and Children and Youth.
If I could, Mr. Swetzer?
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I brought before Ms. Swetzer, I know when ex-director Krista Mickelhenny was still here, Councilman Williams and I went over there, took a tour of Children and Youth, and she cleaned up a lot of mess. It was, I really was sad to see her go. And she said that the matching funds were not always an 80/20 match, and I think that would really be a place to really investigate that, to clean up this decades-long mess we've seen with Children and Youth. And, you know, wishing you the absolute best in the auditor.
Okay. Number two has been deleted. Number three, discussion regarding the resolution providing prior approval for the execution of utility supply contracts.
I'm gonna turn it over to our Director of Operations, Eddie O'Neil.
Good evening, members of council. We recently conducted an RFP process for procuring consulting services for electricity supply. This is something that was done back in 2014 and 2015, for those of you who may have been on board at the time, by my predecessor. The three-year contract that we currently have with our broker and with Constellation Energy is expiring in February. We are trying to get on board. We did solicit proposals and interviewed four different brokers, and the committee that was put together in order to review and interview these candidates made a decision to move our services to a broker other than the current broker. Part of the process, as you may or may not know, is that once we get on board with an electricity supply broker, they will go out and shop electricity for us for both our PPNL and UGI accounts. Because of the high volatility of the electrical supply market and the fact that the rates change daily, it is necessary for us to adopt a resolution from council that would authorize our county manager to execute a contract once it's brought to us from the broker. And basically, how this would work is if the resolution is adopted, hopefully at the next meeting, I've already instructed the broker of the timeframe that we're looking at. They will go out, they will shop prices, and on a given day, they will come to us with the contract prices of that day. Typically, we have a 24 to 48-hour window in which we have to execute the contract because of the changing market. So the reason for this resolution is so that we can jump on board when we are quoted a price. Unfortunately, the market does not allow the timeframe that would normally be needed to run this through council and take a two to four-week period of approval. Again, this is very similar to the process that was done back in 2014 or '15. We are just getting on board with another contract. Also, just a note, the current contract we have is a three-year contract. That may be different going forward. The broker, part of their responsibility is shopping for the county and acting on the best interest of the county. So depending upon what the market outlook is, they may decide to get on board with a one-year contract because perhaps in the foreseeable future, they see the prices decreasing in favor of the county. So this is all part of the consultant's responsibility in trying to get us our best prices. And lastly, I wanted to point out, this is being done slightly differently than the last time in the manner that our UGI accounts now, I'm getting quotes, I've gotten quotes from UGI directly for supply, which is something we didn't do last time. At this particular time, because of the market and some things that have changed recently, the UGI accounts are probably gonna be more competitive to go directly to them for pricing. The PPNL accounts most likely will be more cost-effective to use the broker, just because of their access to different markets. So I want to point that out. So when we get the go-ahead to do this, on the same day, I will be getting prices from our broker for both the PPNL and UGI accounts, and I will also be getting prices from UGI direct for both UGI and PPNL accounts. I have an agreement with the broker that if UGI quotes us a lower cost at that time, that we are under no obligation to go ahead with the broker. There's obviously a small fee that is required if we go into a contract that is brought to us from the broker. So I'm doing my best to make sure that we get our best prices going forward.
Sounds like you have a couple options.
Yes, there are a few options.
You have a broker for both PPNL and UGI?
We have a single broker, yeah. The broker is basically in charge of-
But he's looking at both the PPNL account and the UGI?
That broker is looking at both accounts. They began the process today, they said it would be about a two-week process, and then I've also been in contact with Mr. Reno at UGI, who will be quoting us. Once I make arrangements to have those prices come in on the same day, I'll have two different prices, one from the broker, one from UGI. And if either or both, we can separate them, we will move forward with execution-
If you separate them and you go direct to UGI, there's no brokerage?
Correct, correct.
Questions for Mr. O'Neil?
On a different subject. This gentleman keeps calling me. Couple months ago, in those backhoes, one was from Hazel, and the floor was getting done. Could you tell me the status of those two backhoes? It's like they get back-
Well, let's finish this discussion, and then before Mr. O'Neil sits down, you can follow up with that. Mr. Haas?
Just want to say, great leadership on this, Mr. O'Neil. Should've done this 10 years ago, but thanks for coming on board and really doing diligence on it, it's gonna save us a lot of money.
Yeah, I hope that it will. Based on the prices of the market right now, we look to even save more money than we did the last time. And again, my predecessor did a very good job at saving us money in the current contract we're in, so hopefully, this will be even a larger savings.
Nice work, Ms. Haak.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, you have a cap here of $65. So what is the current, what is your current rate now?
Well, there's a couple of different ways it's quoted, but right now, the market's somewhere around 51, 55.
Okay. And the current contract expires February 19?
There's a small variance. The contracts are not all lined up on the same day, but by the end of February, most of them, and the first week of March.
So you would expect to have something in place before the end of February, right?
We can have prices back as early as two weeks tomorrow.
Okay.
So we'll be making arrangements sometime shortly after that.
Okay. And you said that this is similar to what we did in 2014?
Correct.
I don't recall passing a resolution, adopting a resolution to authorize the manager to sign, and I can't find one in here, in the 2014 resolutions?
I think it was 2015.
Oh, okay. He said 2014.
Yeah, I think it was one of the last things that I imagined.
The resolution may have been adopted in 15. I do have a copy of it here, if I can get to it quickly enough.
Right, three years, 19, yep.
That's all right. I'll find it if it's there.
Yes.
But we did authorize the manager before to do this?
Correct. The resolution was copied almost verbatim. I made some minor changes based on some of the things that I just discussed with you, but other than that, it was copied from the previous resolution. It was, I apologize. I have the new one here, and I thought I had a copy of the former, but I did get that from the solicitor's office. 2015? Yes, it was 2015.
Okay. All right. My only concern with this is authorizing the manager to sign up to a three-year contract. So I would assume that it's not gonna be an issue if it's only a one-year contract, right? Because it wouldn't be a problem with the violation of the, or, you know, with the having to come before council if it's a one-year contract, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So if he were, you know, if he were gonna sign a one-year contract, we wouldn't even need to adopt a resolution like this, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
2015-138.
Okay.
And I think the reason why is, especially when the market's, at the point it is right now, it can be advantageous to us to lock into a longer term. We can get a better price. Obviously, a three-year price will get us our best price for that term.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Neil on this particular item? Now, Mr. Schnee, your backhoe?
This did come up to me a few weeks ago. I remember there being a question about it. It came to me through an email, I believe. I thought that I responded at the time, but there were two backhoes that were taken to Don Castor Line, who does a lot of our repair work.
Right.
There was some rust, I believe one of them needed a floor plate put in. They are in line, if they haven't been completed and returned. I'd have to get the status right now, and I'll be happy to provide that to you for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of them was done in return, the other may still be with them, because we have several machines that were out there being worked on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? Thank you.
Sure. Question for Mr. O'Neil, does well, Mr. Chair? Status, Mr. O'Neil, of County Road number 13, Lucky 13, Chase Road.
The status of Chase Road-
We're gonna see construction this fall, but-
No, that is scheduled for the spring. We did know that going into the fall. They did some preliminary work in the fall. American Asphalt was awarded that contract, but we expect construction to begin probably as early as late March. And I would say-
After they fix the potholes, right?
Well, we did some repair work on that road, keep in mind, with our in-house crew back in the summertime. But the restoration, and the full restoration that's being completed on that will be begun in the spring and hopefully completed no later than the middle of June.
So this true will be a full restoration, milling, layers?
Yep.
Real?
Yeah, base, base repair, milling and overlay.
Ground up, very good. Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Urban?
Mr. Scheiner brought a point about the $5 fee, that grant, there's no money that collected, and no fees collected from anyone because the hasn't been actually placed because of the seizure of Mr. Scheiner.
I don't think Mr. O'Neil would have that information. I think that would be either solicitor's office or Pendot, correct?
Has not been implemented.
Is there a plan to bring that from the vote?
That's a possibility. I've been dealing with chief counsel at Pendot. We've come to an agreement as to how to process the $5 fee. I'm just waiting on his response as to the particulars of that.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to number four, discussion regarding a resolution regarding supervision of financial personnel in County. This has been an ongoing discussion. Mr. Swetzer, you wanted to give us some update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From the county side, we don't have anything, and it's really because I've gotten a couple things from GFOA, a lot of people from government finance officers, as long as elsewhere, were off during the holiday break. So I will be following up, but we haven't gotten a response from what we sent out at the end of December. I know they're active because I've gotten some new questions that came up in my email, so it's not that the group isn't active or it wasn't received, I also got a received email. I think it's just with the timing, we haven't heard anything back from that group yet. Also, the individual counties, the only person I heard back from, and I don't have an org chart, was Lackawanna. They're a little bit different structure because they have the commissioners, they also still have the row offices. Their office has the row office kind of do their own thing, so the row offices would not be included. And then the actual person in charge up there, Mr. Durkin, his title is Admin Services, Budget Services, and CFO. So he does kind of oversee everything, but he has people underneath him, as I talked before. So I don't have their chart of accounts. If I can get it from him or from their website, I'll gladly update it, but that's the only person in the timeframe we've talked about that's gotten back to me.
Anyone else? Mr. Urban?
I would say, and again, we couldn't agree or disagree, that if, you know, if council, we do with the direction of council, council has a vote on this and wants information from that, I'm more than happy to provide it, we'll gladly follow up on it, and if that's the direction of council, we'll do that. Until then, I'd just like to follow up and get information and continue the discussion.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I would just say that if there's no information from management side, then maybe I could do a little more research, and we can have a more full discussion of it at the next meeting.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Number five, discussion regarding revising the county manager evaluation document, and a copy of the docket was included in your packet this evening. And Ms. Haak, this is a request that you made?
Right, and it was my request because in, you know, doing the evaluation this year, it just occurs to me that some of the items in here are outdated. Say, for example, in the section, the first section of Staff Effectiveness, it says, "Begin standardization of classifications and job description." So this was put together when, well, seven years ago, when we were at the beginning of Home Rule, and we were trying to get a lot of the things that were mandated in the charter and the administrative code, we were trying to get those, you know, put in concrete, you know, and say, this is what we wanted the manager to do. And I think that after seven years, it's time to look at it again and say, what do we want our current manager to be doing? And, you know, it needs to be part of the evaluation process, because certainly anyone doing the job needs to know what's expected of them. So I did send you, I sent to all of council, the ICMA, I sent an email, but it was late this afternoon, so I'm sure nobody had a chance to look at it. But for something to consider, there was a link to the ICMA Manager Evaluations Handbook, which is very, very comprehensive about how management, and, you know, that's the organization that Mr. Pedri actually belongs to, I believe, about what they expect in terms of manager evaluations, and it's pretty comprehensive. And then there's also a second one that contains the 18 Best Practices for Effective Government Leadership, which is very helpful and very comprehensive. And I think that if we take some time and put, take a look at those things, we can come up with some concrete things. In the Strategic Initiatives Committee, we talked last year about effective government, and we talked about how to make the body of government work better. And we talked to Mr. Parsnick about that and Mr. Pedri, but I think it needs to start at the top, too. So I just think it's time to reevaluate the tool for evaluation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I appreciate Ms. Haak bringing this up, and I got a chance to look at some of the things, Linda, but I think would be helpful for me if I saw some templates, if we could dig some up of other institutions that have that. And I also really want to encourage the manager, too, I mean, he's a partner in this, if he wants, and he and his office want to bring up ideas they have for a more equitable and fair evaluation, I'm all about that, too. You know, so we could do him justice as well.
And not to interrupt you, but when we first started all this, and when Bob Lawton came on board, he asked for a 360 evaluation, which was to be evaluated by everybody, even the community, and to have that kind of a tool in place. And I don't think that was a bad idea. I think it was a way to bring everybody in and all the stakeholders into the evaluation process and to talk about how the county is being run. So, I mean, I certainly think that's one option, but I didn't want to get too far into it unless I thought that a majority of council would be interested in revising this.
I think you make a good case to, I don't think we have to throw the baby out the bathwater, but I think we can make some changes for sure. And there are counties that have that. I was thinking when Mr. Swetzer was up here, too, about, you know, Pennsylvania has 67 counties, but there's only about maybe 10 or so home rule counties. So, you know, maybe we can look at their evaluations, too, also with, Mr. Raabo's telling me seven, Mr. Raabo. And, you know, really, Brian, if you want to talk to them, we can do a both-hand, talk about what, how they manage, how they assess their manager, as well as how their financial outfit is run optimally.
Okay. Anybody who would have any comments or want further discussion, please send that information forward. And Ms. Haak talked about the 360 evaluation, that was something that Mr. Lawton brought forward at that point in time. We did do that at that point in time. We had a small amount of participation by parties outside of county, government, but certainly something maybe we could look at again.
Should we refer to this to the Strategic Initiatives Committee, Mr. Chair, and they can accept our recommendations?
First of all, I'd like to give all council a chance, and then certainly we can refer to committee.
We can give the committee our feedback if need be, just thought, might give us more quicker action for this next year.
Ms. Haak?
Yeah, I would just add that if you take a look at that ICMA book, the evaluation-
And I think that's the book we used in the beginning also.
We did, but it talks about the 360 evaluation, and it does say that even though you use that, the essential evaluators are the manager, you know, the people that the manager is actually working for. So council ends up being the effective, the evaluators, and you take everybody's comments and opinions into consideration, but it really falls on council, it would fall on council to do the evaluation.
I think that's what we're seeing.
Right, right.
Okay. Number six, discussion regarding weaknesses, deficiencies, internal controls noted in 2017 audit. We have an audit meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. I think this is a topic that would certainly should come before the audit committee, and depending on, you know, the actions of the audit committee, we certainly can bring it back to a work session.
If I could just say, I did send a list of those, and I know it was probably right around Christmas time, around the end of December, so I'm sure nobody looked too closely at all of that. But I thought that if we look at those kinds of things, that might actually be a springboard for looking at the evaluation tool as well. So certainly, we can talk about that at the audit committee, but that was my thinking, that some of those things are concrete, could be concrete goals.
Okay. Any other items?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Culler?
There was a question about our minutes in meetings, and it's not showing up. Will we get an answer to that by the next meeting?
Yeah, we've, I just actually assigned IT while I was here to review it with Sharon, so-
Thank you.
We're gonna take a look at it, and then we'll let council know.
Okay. Anything else? Public comment? Mr. Raabo?
Just have two quick things. One, in respect to the $5 registration fee, it's my understanding that as part of the committee, as chairman assignments in the state, House member Mike Carroll from our delegation has been appointed as the minority chair of the House Transportation Committee, which oversees Pendot. So I think that might be conducive to have the manager and Mr. Chair, for you to discuss this matter with him about the $5 registration fee as pertains to how this can be, you know, the matching funds and, you know, how the collection process would be in conjunction with the $5 that the county's gonna collect. I think that would be-
Oh, the county won't collect it, Pendot will.
Pendot will collect it, but how the county will receive it, excuse me. I stand corrected. Secondly, with respect to what Mr. Urban brought up about the stormwater fee, and I'm not gonna go into the municipal end of it, I'm gonna ask about the county end of it, because during the year last year, there's approximately 60 million gallons of raw untreated waste dumped into the Susquehanna River during last year. It was in a newspaper report. And I don't think EPA or DEP ever fined the one who did the dumping, which was Binghamton, New York. So I find it very distressing that while our citizens here are being taxed or feed to death for the stormwater fee, that EPA or DEP has not even given a warning to Binghamton with respect to what they did. And I think because it affects this county, because the Susquehanna does run through this city, this county seat, I think it would be affecting some of our county properties, and also- And also, I would like to know if the sanitary authority, Mr. Chair, reached out to this council, or to the manager, actually, I should say, and any of the department, division heads for the stormwater fee, if the county would actually have to participate in such a, you know, such an endeavor, you know, as far as mapping goes, like Mr. Urban said, the mapping, or any of the, you know, other waterways that the county might, it might fall into the county properties. I would like to know if that is also going to be affected. So the stormwater fee does affect this county in that way, and I would like to know the answer to that question. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Urban, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.